Okay, call the meeting you order at seven o'clock. Call the roll, please.
Archie.
Present.
Bronis.
Present.
Bowman.
Present.
Gaving.
Present.
Johnson. Brett.
Present.
Williams.
Six present, we have a quorum. Would you please stand? We're going to be led in the pledge of allegiance tonight by some special leaders. Thank you very much. Okay, tonight's a little unusual because we're going to go into a public hearing relating to the passage of the budget. So we'll go in, we will adjourn the current agenda for just a moment and go into the public hearing. Would you please call the roll for the public hearing?
Archie.
Bronis. Present.
Bowman.
Present.
Gaving.
Present.
Brett.
Present.
Williams.
Present. Okay, we have a quorum. So at this point, we're going to turn it over to Mr. Grossi to present the budget.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Walters, President Bowman, Board of Education, and Community of District 111. I'm here to present the unaudited financial summary from fiscal year 2023 and then our projected budget for 2024. Our preliminary results in 2023 show that our total expenses exceed our total revenues by $3 million. We project to end fiscal year 2023 with a fund balance of a little over $24 million. Historically since 2014, this graph shows the surplus or deficit whether your revenues exceeded your expenses or if your expenses exceeded your revenues for the last 10 years. In the last 10 years, the district averaged a surplus of almost $500,000 per year. You can see in 2014 through 2017, the district was having significant deficits each year. Throughout better spending practices and changes to the structure of the district, then we were able to achieve a surplus in 2018 that carried along until 2023. In 2023, you'll see that the district had a $6 million deficit around there excluding capital projects, but that is going to be an exception rather than the norm. Last year, the board approved the community center, a capital project that will be paid for out of various funds. It would be paid out of one-time HESR expenses, and the remainder of it was going to be used with fund balances or evidence-based funding. So evidence-based funding dollars that were traditionally put into Fund 10 or Fund 20 were being put into Fund 60 to fund this project. This project is anticipated to be continued by the end of fiscal year 2024, which means that evidence-based funding dollars are being budgeted into capital projects again this year to pay for the remainder of the project. But then next year in 2025, the district can go back to its normal budgeting practice of budgeting the majority of their evidence-based funding dollars, which receive over $40 million per year. You can go back to the practice of putting that almost all into the education. This kind of shows the historical last five years of what I just mentioned with the evidence-based funding distribution. Last year, almost $10 million went to non-operating funds, which is one-fourth of our evidence-based I wanted to point out the great things that the district was able to do over the past several years, the past 10 years, to improve its buildings. There was a lot of new money that came in the district beginning in 2018. In 2018, the district received qualified school construction bonds of nearly $30 million. And then in 2023 and '24, HESR dollars were budgeted towards construction projects. In the last 10 years, the district spent $86 million on facility improvements. Of that amount, $67 million were funded with bond proceeds and HESR grants, and $19 million were funded with cash reserves. The historical balances for the last 10 years, you can see what I mentioned earlier. When you look at the gray bars, that shows our unreserved fund balance, our fund balance that isn't earmarked specifically for construction through a bond issue. Despite the, despite what you saw on the last slide with the increase of money going towards capital, you can see that the district's unreserved fund balances have been trending positive since 2015. Now I'll get on to the 2024 budget. There's a few recent events that I wanted to highlight that are going to affect the district's long-term financial structure. The first is that the district will receive $38 million of HESR funds between fiscal year '21 and fiscal year '24. Now, a lot of your HESR funds have gone towards construction, which is what a lot of districts have done. The reason for doing that is a good practice with any grant that you get. You'd like to make the expenses be one-time expenses that do not reoccur because if in 2025, if any of those $38 million of expenses continue, they have to be absorbed in your regular budget. So the priority of the district was to make sure that those expenses are one-time things, but that's something that's going to be important to monitor, that any new programs or things that were added in these last three or four years with HESR funds, you make sure that that's built into the overall district plan as opposed to doing what we used to do plus what we're doing with our HESR funds. The second thing was the bid for the community center that I already mentioned. The third major thing that the district did was they decided to bring transportation in-house for fiscal year 2024. So each year, about 80% of transportation expenses get reimbursed back to the district by the state, but the revenues are a year behind the expenses. So the district had a lot of new one-time costs this year, such as leasing a bus facility, buying new buses, hiring staff, benefits, all of that. So the district's transportation expenses are higher than they traditionally were, but our revenues are going to match the expenses from last year. So the transportation fund shows almost a $3 million deficit this year because of the timing of bringing transportation in-house. That money will be recouped in 2025 after we fill out our transportation reimbursement claim for 2024. So the $3 million deficit you see in the transportation fund is a cash flow issue. The last thing which I mentioned at last budget presentation is TRS, the Pension Base System for Certified Staff, changed the way in which districts were allowed to report earnings and days worked for their employees. In the past, in the past, reports were due by August 15th, and you were able to pay out your teachers for the summer. Teachers get paid from September through August because you don't, because the school year starts at the end of August or early September. So you don't know who's going to be coming back, what new teachers you have, who's leaving, things like that. But last year, TRS mandate forced districts to pay all teachers out through June 30th. So essentially, because of cash flow issues, there were 28 payrolls last year because there was the regular 24 that they normally do, 12 months times two per month, plus two payrolls in July and two payrolls in August, which usually go in the following fiscal year to finish paying up the teacher contracts. But because of this new mandate, they had to go into fiscal year 2023. So that cash flow showed expenses to be a little overstated. Now let's talk about some of the major factors affecting the 2024 budget. We project that you will receive about $433,000 increase in real estate taxes versus the prior year due to the CPI. The Illinois Department of Revenue sent out a letter to all districts in the state and said that for many years, they were miscalculating how much money that they were allocating to schools. So every school district in Illinois got their CPPRT, their corporate personal property real estate tax, decreased by 28.8%, every district in the state because of just miscalculation. So that will decrease your revenues there by $1.8 million. Lastly, the district has little over $5 million in HESR grant revenues, which are lagging one fiscal year behind from reimbursements from the state. And then the budget projects a $6.9 million working cash bond to fund future capital Expenses are pretty straightforward, and I already mentioned the transportation and the capital projects. So our budgeted, our budget revenues, we project that the district will receive a little over $96 million in revenues during fiscal year 2024. That's a decrease by almost $10 million versus 2023, but the majority of that is because of two things. One is because of the $1.8 million of CPPRT that you could see under other local revenues, which we expect to decrease, the other being that the district has only about $5 million of HESR expenses that need to be spent this year. So the HESR expenses are going to go down versus last year, but so are the revenues because you only get reimbursement when you spend. So everything else has a slight increase. Our total expenses project to remain relatively flat, $109.9 million of expenses. Last year, there was $109.6 million of expenses, so that only, that only shows a $300,000 increase. The decrease of almost $4 million that you see in purchased services is primarily from transportation. The district outsourced transportation last year, so all $5 million of transportation expenses were recorded as purchased services. This year, because transportation is in-house, some of that money is going into salaries, some's going into benefits, some's going into capital equipment for purchasing buses, And finally, you can see the breakdown of the fiscal year 2024 budget by fund. We project that the district will end this fiscal year with $17.5 million fund balance, and that total expenses will exceed total revenues by a little over $9 million. Now, that number jumps off the page, but there's, there's two things that in 2025 that I mentioned will bring the district's structure right back to around a balanced budget. The first is that the budget has $6.2 million of evidence-based funding into the capital projects fund. By the end of fiscal year 2024, all outstanding construction will be paid, and there won't be a need to break evidence-based funding into those other funds. So that adds $6 million, a little over $6 million back to that deficit. The other difference is the $3 million that I mentioned, the difference with transportation. The district taking on transportation in-house, the cash flow that's being caused of that is causing the district to spend more money this year, but you'll get more revenue next year than you normally do. So taking out those two things, the district's budget is essentially pretty close to being balanced, if that, if that makes sense. I'd be happy to explain that further, answer any questions that anybody may have, but that is our 2024 budget.
Let's start with the board. Are there any questions from any of the board members, comments? Mr. Williams? Do you have it?
Yes, Robbie, in, at least in my opinion, we received almost $30 million construction grant, and we just, we just received the HESR, we also received the HESR funds. $30 million construction grant was, was one, was something wonderful for our district because it was money that we used to just about totally renovate the high school and to also pass money around the district that wasn't at a cost to our taxpayers. And I want to say that again, wasn't a cost to our taxpayers. We were, we were recently blessed with more than $30 million worth of HESR funds, and thank God for COVID because we did, we also were able to, yeah, that's, thank God for COVID because it helped our district and we were able to, the field house or the community center, we took part of that money and, and we're brick and mortar, and it's going to be our building. Cankey lags behind the schools in the north with such facilities, and I think it's been great that we're able to achieve, to receive the funds, the construction grant and the HESR funds to, to enhance our district. Some people say it's not reading, writing, and arithmetic, but it's a part of the reading, the writing, and the arithmetic for a community like ours where we don't have to go out and tax our people and it, and it, I just, on my tax bill, and it's okay, but it's, I think it's been great that we were able to do that and with those funds, the construction grant and the HESR funds. And like you said, it will start to balance itself out in 2025, we will have the HESR funds, but we have a building, we'll have a new building at the, at the high school that we, that goes back 20 or 30 years, or will maybe go 20 or 30 years, and building, rebuilding the high school. I was the one that was the watchdog, and I watched them take furniture out of the high school that had been in the high school since 1967 when East Ridge and Westby opened up, and I said to myself, wow, it's, it was still here and restored it in those, those red beds out there. And I asked myself, why? I said, this stuff has been here for, at that time, you know, 50 years, or quite a while, and so we've done a good job, and we're going to continue, and we, and I thank God again for COVID. I thank God for the construction grant that we have been able to, to come into this century with, with the state-of-the-art high school, and, and at the same time, we've been able to, to go around the district and do certain things with, with all the rest of the schools in our district.
Yes, and also, yeah, the qualified school construction bonds, less than 30 districts across the state qualify for them, and they focused on some of the qualifications where they wanted districts to be able to do things that they never would be able to do normally. So the interest-free bonds and being able to spread those out over 40 years gave the district that opportunity.
Ms. Bronis? Ms. Archie? Any questions? Ms. Brett?
My only comment is, I hope you're right about 2025 because dating another $3 million or $9 million hit to the funds would not be a good thing. So we're going to trust that prediction, and you'll make up the difference, right?
And, and also to, to help with that, as soon as your fiscal year 2023 audit is done, I'll create another annual five-year projection for the board. We'll have a lot better idea of how 2024 is going to, this will be probably January, February, and we'll have a lot better idea of what's going to happen during this fiscal year, what's the transportation expenses actually going to look like. Things of that short, and we'll really be able to display that, but yeah, it's going to be important to look at all of that because next year, I mean, two, two major things, $38 million of HESR expenses and revenues over the past four years are going to be gone, and then this construction project being paid for with fund balance reserves is going to be off the books as well. So then you'll get a really better flavor of where you truly stand with the day-to-day expenses, year-over-year expenses.
At this point, if there's any public comment, that's what the public hearing is for, if anybody has any questions or comments. Questions or comments from the public? Is this in lieu of your, the other speech?
No.
Oh, I was trying, I was trying to hear.
Just a question.
Well, state your name, state your name.
Uh, Robert Allen T. Snipes.
Thank you.
1371, he said. Thanks for getting it wrong. Those sponsored bonds that are interest-free is still going to be paid by the taxpayers? Or who pays that bond? Something has to be attached to it. Though the interest-free is great, the bond has to be paid from the base.
So when normal bond issues occur, you're able to, you're able to levy out the funds over the next 20 years. What the qualified school construction bonds did was they let you do it over 40 years. So ultimately, it's, it's being paid by the taxpayers, but it's not new money that's paid by the taxpayers. The district historically has always maxed out its bond and interest levy by, by doing bond issues to pay for capital projects, to pay for roofs and poylors and things like that in the building. What this allowed us to do is borrow more money without sacrificing any of the regular bonds that need to be borrowed, and then at the time of the payment, let's say we pay $300,000 in interest from the bonds at a bond payment in December and June, then the federal government writes us a check for $300,000 to pay back that interest portion.
Okay, that would be the classic principle with the breakdown though.
No, doesn't.
So that $300 just goes back into your pocketbook just offset the end?
Yeah, and, and it'll, it allowed, it allowed the, without getting too into, it allowed the district to borrow, we use the anticipated interest returns to borrow principal against so that it didn't tie up the district's ability to be flexible down the future.
Right, so therefore, if no interest basic, that means when you get that particular check back, we, it just goes back into the operating cost?
It just goes back into the debt services funds for future bond payments.
Any other questions from the public? Any other questions from the public? At this point, I would ask them for a motion to close the public hearing. Made by Mr. Gaving, is there a second? Second by Ms. Bronis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I guess we should call the roll. I'm sorry, I didn't read my instructions. Call the roll on the motion closing.
Archie.
Bronis.
Yes.
Gaving.
Yes.
Johnson. Brett.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes. Six ayes, zero noes, so we are closing the public hearing at this point, and we will return to the agenda for this meeting. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Grossi, appreciate the information. At this point, we go into the superintendent's report.
Before we get started on instruction, we would like to present a special award to one of our outstanding teachers, and so if Ms. Petty can come forward.
Good evening, board, sending all to our community and families. The family of Crystal Martinez, please come. Come on, they didn't know. Come on, Mary. So in an effort to honor Crystal, one of our amazing local educators, who is no longer in the district, we decided that we wanted to start something new that can be passed on over the years for other educators who also share the same legacy as Crystal. Before I go into reading what I have for her, I would like to call Tracy to let that, she would like to say a few encouraging words and just kind of provide the community and families and the board with a little of how, a little information in terms of how she, her perception of Crystal while working alongside of her community.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to take an opportunity to thank our family for helping and keeping a part of their family. So thank you for welcoming. Crystal was an amazing human being, sorry, I'm going to get tripped up. She was an amazing human being, a natural teacher, gifted, lovely, took a core. She taught with passion and strength and could dress down a really tall sixth-grade boy in both languages. She was as welcoming and lovely as she was disciplined and strong. She was, um, as welcoming and lovely as she was, um, disciplined and strong. And I'm a better person for having her. And Kankakee School District is a better place because she was part of our family. So thank you for sharing her with us.
So in my tenure, um, as the baliwo director, um, I had the opportunity to, um, to work with Crystal as well. And so I just basically wanted to say this, to say Crystal was an amazing educator is an understatement. Crystal was more than that. Crystal's passion, her drive, her enthusiasm, her charisma, her vision, and her personality spoke value for who she was as an educator. She really enjoyed working with her students. She enjoyed her job. So today, we would like to salute Crystal for being who she was, for my, for making a positive impact in the lives of her students and for leaving a legacy that would inspire other educators to follow their dreams. I found a little poem that I think sums up Crystal in terms of her perception and how she felt about her students. It was a teacher's prayer. It says, "I want my students, I want to teach my students how to live this life on earth, to face his struggles and his strife and to improve their work. Not just a lesson in the book or how the river flows, but how to choose the proper path wherever they may go, to understand eternal truths and know the right from wrong and together all the beauty will flower in the song. For I hope the world to grow in wisdom and in grace. Then I shall feel that I have won and I have filled my place. And so I ask God for guidance, that I may do my part for care to and confidence and happiness of heart." Thank you. So today, we present Mary Martinez with our first recipient of the Crystal Martinez Educator Award for, um, for being an effective educator. And thank you for this, Chris.
So I'm, um, going to start the instructional report. And as he's pulling up the PowerPoint, um, we're going to talk about the importance of grade level assignments and materials. And I have, at the end of the presentation, I have a biology book. And, um, I'm gonna pass it around. If you open the biology book, there's a passage and I'm going to show you what needs to be done in the classes in order to stay with the grade level assignment. But sometimes you have to support our students in terms of being able to read it at grade level. So I'll explain that during the presentation. So the first thing that we want to say about instruction, for a number of years, we felt like we were really struggling with increasing test scores. And we found out in two thousand nineteen, the reason we were struggling is because thirty percent of the assignments that were given to our students or the instruction was at grade level. And so one of the things that we talked about, and I think many of the board members remember this discussion, is you cannot pass a test at grade level if you are not exposed to the instruction at grade level. And though after, uh, after two thousand nineteen, we worked really hard on monitoring and holding everyone accountable for providing grade level instruction and grade level assignments. And so as you can see, our two thousand nineteen scorecard, what we're trying to see, it was at about twenty-nine percent. And, um, by two thousand twenty-two, we were at seventy-eight percent. And so that was a significant increase. The other thing that I want to point out, and I don't know if you can read it, but this is from, um, John Hadding, Visible Learning, and it talks about the interventions or the, the things that need to be done in a classroom in order to truly increase student achievement. And as you can see, an effect size, a one is a really strong effect size. Anything above one is, is, is amazing. So collective teacher efficacy is a one point six. And then if you go to the middle, the classroom discussion is at a point four. But anything over point five is a strong effect size. So as you can see, many of the things that we're trying to do here in the Kankakee School District one eleven, first of all, providing grade level assignments and grade level instruction, and then really focusing on professional learning communities and holding, um, holding classroom instruction at, at a high level and holding teachers accountable will actually eventually lead to strong test scores. Again, if you're not providing grade level assignments, you cannot pass the test at grade level. So self-reported grades, that's why it's so important to hold everyone accountable for communicating with our students and talking about their grades in a timely fashion, direct instruction, um, formative teacher evaluation, P J Asian programs, feedback, response to intervention, classroom instruction, all will have a strong impact on student learning. And then if you can see the reverse effect sizes, summer vacation, lack of sleep, retention, boredom, suspension, excelling. So this research is, is, I don't know how many years old. Like, this is research that I, that I was aware of before we even came to Kankakee. And so these are our, this is our local assessment, this is not state, state assessment. As you can see, in terms of our local assessment, we are making academic improvement. However, this does not necessarily go correlate directly into changing the test scores, the state test scores. These are our local scores. So as you can see, in fall twenty-one, twenty-two, you can see where we were at the far left. And then you can see the increase in terms of students who are showing growth. So in the fall twenty-twenty-three, we're less than fifty percent of our students at or above the thirty-fifth student growth percentile. This is growth, this is, this is not attainment. So this is going from point A to point B. Um, for example, it's going from maybe first grade to second grade or first grade to third grade. But if you're, if you need to take a test at the fourth grade level, you still have some more growth to go. So here's our star reading level of growth. If you have a student that is behind in terms of grade level, you really want that student to be at the top where you can see where it usually looks like a dark blue bar. Students that are not, you can see the number of students that are on low growth is decreasing. The number of students that have high growth is increasing. In order to, in order to improve test scores, you need more students at high growth. And this is the reason why, if you have a second grader that is, that is functioning at a first grade level and they have typical growth, they're gonna make a year's growth. So they're going to be at the first grade level, the following year they'll be in the second grade level, but they'll still be behind. If the, in order to close the achievement gap, you need to have as many of our students at high growth as possible. Here's our star math student growth. Again, this is student growth, it's not attainment. So in the fall of twenty-one, twenty-two, a little bit over fifty percent of our students were making the growth that we really want in order to turn, to turn, to close the achievement gap. And you can see that increased to over sixty-six percent. And here, again, the top bar that looks dark green and actually, when we look at it, literally, uh, we look at blue. We want as many of our students to be in the blue area because that's when the achievement gap will be closing. Anything in the blue is more than one, one year's growth. And so again, if we're making the one year's growth that you're behind, it's growth that we would like to see, but it's not going to be enough growth to close the achievement gap. We are still, in terms of the percentage of the students that are above the fortieth percentile, which is where we would need to be in order to, um, to do really well on the state testing, we're still at, we're still low. We still have a lot of work to do in order to, um, move our students above the fortieth percentile. And actually, above the sixtieth percentile to guarantee that they will test well. But again, it's going to take some time to move those test scores because we need to have years of time with students interacting with grade level assignments and grade level instruction. We started the process in two thousand nineteen. It was really a challenge because it was a paradigm shift. Last year, with a lot of, um, accountability and monitoring, we got to seventy-eight percent. I would say in the next five years, staying at around eighty percent, you will start to see a change in, um, student outcomes at the state level. We are already seeing it at the local level. So you can see, um, this is our growth starting back in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, all the way to twenty-two, twenty-three. Our goal is to have higher-than-expected growth across the board in all grade levels. When you start seeing more blue, no red, no yellow, as little green as possible, you'll start to see the test scores improve significantly. So the goal for the district is to get to higher-than-expected growth. Or maintain a student coming into kindergarten, first grade, and second grade, make sure that they don't get behind, which should happen if we continue using grade level assignments and grade level materials. And here you'll see English. Again, you want to see more blue, which is higher-than-expected growth in order to close the achievement gap. And you, so you can see that we are improving. And I really believe that that's because we've had a, an intense focus on making sure that we're monitoring access to grade level assignments. And so I'll talk about, um, multi-tier systems of support. So now, this is a belief that I have. I know that when we talk about tier-three students, we tend to talk about the students that are struggling. Uh, we also need to look at the students that are extremely high, like our gifted and honored student. So tier, tier one is students that do well with what we normally do. Tier two are students that need targeted support and it has to be a little bit different because they need something different. You can go both ways. I think every time we talk about tier-three supports, we always talk about our, our struggling students. But some of our students that are really gifted, um, and are accelerated, they need additional interventions and supports also in order to maintain that acceleration. And so I believe in more of a diamond than a triangle. And so what we, what we really need to do now, um, is first of all, I passed out that biology book. And the reason I passed that biology book is one of the things that we're struggling with is understanding that all students can be exposed to grade level assignments. In my previous district, I know it's been ten years ago, we used grade level assign, uh, grade level text and assignments for all of our students, even if they are non-analytical and non-verbal, meaning our severely disabled students. So what we believe is that we're not going to read brown bear, brown bear to a twelfth grader. And so when you look at the accommodation versus the modifications, accommodations, you don't change the content of the assignment. Modifications is you're gonna actually change what the student is expected to do or give them an alternative assignment. Even with our students who are gifted and honors, you can use this kind of mindset that we're gonna make accommodations or modifications to the quality of the instru- or to the, not the quality, to the instruction. And so here's an example of what we need to do to continue to use grade level work. Um, you can see in that biology book, that, there's a, a tab in there with a yellow sheet. This is the, um, this is the, uh, an excerpt from that book. And so you can see this, it's talking about humans as predators. So that's the topic in the book, it's one of our, it's one of the high school books. And then we literally copy the, the text from the book into the readability score report. And you can see, I was happy to see this, you can see that the readability, if you look at the grade level readability, it's at the ninth grade level. It's ninth grade, it's a ninth grade book. Most of the times, students are taking biology in the ninth grade, so that was good. The problem is that when you're working with a student that may be at a lower grade level, what do you do for that student? The first thing you should do is pre-teach the vocabulary. And so you can see, I'm gonna go to the next slide. I rewrote that passage so that I could take down the readability score. And so literally, I took out vocabulary words like, um, let me see, like population. And then I figured out how to describe population without using that vocabulary. And I also shortened the sentences and that's how you take a, a passage, grade level assignment, and you take it, take it to a different level without losing the message of the content. So you can see that I took down the readability score from the ninth grade to sixth grade just by taking out some of the vocabulary and shorting some of the sentences. So when you think about interventions and supports, one of the main things we need to do is pre-teach vocabulary. And one of the other things that we can do is start to break down the sentences and change the vocabulary so that they can e- at least understand the topic of humans as predators. So that's the big idea, human as predators. There's two different ways to present that idea. At the ninth grade level, using higher-level vocabulary and more complex sentences. Or at the sixth grade level, using, using lower vocabulary and less complex sentences. And so I really think the next step is vocabulary development and making sure that teachers know how to break down a big idea or concept so that students can understand that concept regardless of what grade level they're reading. So what I used to say in my previous life is that even if you can't read at grade level, often you can think at grade level. And so there's no way, there's no reason not to teach a freshman this concept either by pre-teaching the vocabulary about the test and then coaching them through that, that process, feel about the test, and then coaching them through that, that process, it's called executive functioning, and just making them think about their learning. Um, coaching from T N T P through Good to Great is already started. We also have our T N T P, the New Teacher Project. I'm working with our leadership teams and having instructional rounds, they've already started. Uh, we continue to focus on grade level assignments and instruction. Um, common form, common, common formative assessments have been created and we're really focusing on making sure those professional learning communities happening. And we want to strengthen our tutoring program. The other thing that I think is important, important to learn is summer opportunities for students to continue learning in the summer, but not making every single student do that is very important. I think flexible scheduling and giving students what they need. If a student can take off in the summer because they're traveling to Europe, that's learning. But if they are not traveling to Europe and you think that they're going to lose, if you go back to a negative effect size, summer vacation is a negative effect size. And so if they're, if they're one of those students that are negatively affected by summer vacation, we need to continue to interact them in the summer. So are there any questions about the instruction?
Wherever's any questions?
I have a question.
Heard.
We're discussing growth and test scores. Um, so what kind of support do we have for our low? I know the high school, it's pretty well set, uh, while like tutoring. What kind of support do we have for our lower-level teachers? For, for our younger kids, for our kids that are struggling? Do we have anything in place for that?
Yes, and that's designed by each building because each building is, is different depending on the needs of the building. And we do have four buildings that are receiving additional funding in order to improve those scores. So if I, if you don't mind, Chris, I would like you to really quickly, in like thirty seconds to a minute, talk about how you use your Title I funds and your, um, school improvement funds to focus on those students that are struggling. Start with Ash.
Thank you, it's here. Um, I R test taking materials we had presented today. They came in and talked about some I R things, um, for our teachers. And then we're gonna start back to school tutoring, uh, at that next month, the first thing.
So I know that, um, Ted's not here. Jenny, can you come and talk a little bit more about Kankakee Three?
Tab is here.
Oh, I didn't see you picture, I thought you were not gonna be available. Come on, Ash, come on. I apologize. And then followed by Mark Lang and students not here right now.
Good evening, we met with Star today. Um, the main focus was helping us plan our instruction based on the data. So just really making data-based decisions, um, to plan our start for our students this year.
Good evening, not so much different, just about instruction. And moving forward, we're providing them along some more details.
So King Kennedy L C C?
We, um, we've started our tutoring. So we have teachers in our house that help support those kids who need the support. We'll also be hiring more people in the ability to help support the areas where we're lacking the most.
Um, we're having a bunch of different deals in schools and we're starting our annual after-school program, which is about the same. Apparently, we've adjusted for the daily schools, and we are starting our after-school after-school program, which is about the same.
And Junior High, do you want to add anything? Because you said K2A, right?
So at the junior high, we have Twilight as well, that's what's at the high school. And then we have the K2K connect between both of our students, which is tutoring for them. And then we've expanded on our TNTP relationship. So with our grant, we're expanding on their services for our teachers and classrooms.
And so we work in grade bands, so that in our pre-K, it's sometimes very significantly different. But a lot of the expectations that Central Office has for the buildings, we discussed and work in grade bands.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, I got a question. How, K23, how would you manage to make sure that the children have got their validation set when it comes to reading?
So.
How, I think we're focusing too much on math and science and not enough on reading. Test scores aren't decided, they should be reading.
So actually, if you look at our math growth versus our reading growth, we're starting to do much better in the area of reading. So you can see the blue means it's higher-than-expected growth. What we've been really focusing on for the last year is going, having Central Office staff who are not tied to a building, going in and collecting data on whether or not we're actually providing grade-level assignments. So the first thing we have to do is get the assignments, observe instruction, and then just take data on whether or not the instructions and the assignments are at grade level. I think that made a significant difference last year, basically our accountability plan. It was really hard. The accountability plan was very difficult, but I think that is the reason that you're starting to see progress, is because we're holding people accountable for the district expectations.
What kind of plan are you receiving?
It's a struggle, it's a paradigm shift. So it's a little bit of a struggle, but I think it's much better now than it was when we initially introduced TNTP to the board. So that was back in 2019. I think we've made tremendous progress in terms of mindset and in terms of the actual assignments.
Yeah, because that was, that was not the, the grade-level assignments, they wasn't getting. And when we started, it was like thirteen percent grade-level work. And when I first heard about it, I thought it became a game.
That was the number feature of the high school. I think it's a hundred and eighty-seven to the point in meetings that was a great number. I was thinking, yes.
And then, turn up, turn up, turn up, turn up, turn up, turn up, turn up. I just wanted the reading scores to get up, although they didn't understand what they were doing in all other classes.
So, but I'm going to go back to what needs to happen with students that are at the high school. First of all, it's not necessarily, the high school inherits what comes down from the lower, comes up from the rest.
That was my point, yeah.
So, but if you, but the intervention or the strategy that should be used is to take the content and either actively pre-teach the vocabulary or change the readability of the passage. And so that was an example, that was a biology book written at the ninth grade level, but I was easily able to take it down to the sixth grade level by changing the vocabulary and the complexity of the sentence structure. And so those are some of the things that are going to have to be done in order to work through students that have not been receiving grade-level assignments for some years. And it's not intentional. The research actually says that most schools have no idea that they're not necessarily providing high-quality grade-level assignments until they actually research it and collect the data. And so by collecting the data, that's how we were able to realize that and then make a change.
Anybody else? Thank you very much, Dr. Rogers.
Can you send it back?
Good, good stuff. Uh, next is finance.
Good evening, board members, and of course, the leading leader, Dr. Walters. My report will be looking at the vacancies that we have currently in the district. And so again, I would just like to go over the hiring process for the school district. Teachers and their professionals are interviewed and hired by building principals and their team. Building level administrators are hired by the assistant superintendent of HR and team, and that will consist of teachers, administrators, and board members. Directors and central office administrators are hired by the members of the cabinet. And then per the K2K School District, when you learn the word of education, Dr. Walters was interviewed, the final candidates for building and higher-level administrators. So currently, we're looking at building vacancies. At Preckler, there are a total of about one hundred and one employees. Now, to understand that is including not only teachers, but teachers and students, food service, care professionals. So Preckler is at one hundred and one employees. They currently have one vacancy and zero instructors. TAD, around forty employees, current vacancies are zero, and TAD currently has four instructors. Twain, sixteen employees, current vacancies one, instructors four. Edison, around thirty-five employees, current vacancies zero, instructors three. Student, twenty-nine employees, no current vacancies, and no instructors. Just to also reiterate that the current vacancies are being covered by permanent sub, so there are no classrooms that don't have anyone in the class, but they may have a permanent sub in the building or in that particular classroom. A King, there are about sixty employees, current vacancies are three, instructors are five. Kennedy, about sixty employees, two current vacancies, and instructors are twelve. LCC, Montessori, sixty-seven employees, zero vacancies and two instructors. The junior high, forty, around forty-five employees, six current vacancies and eight instructors. Again, with the junior high, those six vacancies are not classroom positions, but one's like an MTSS coordinator, so it's not a teaching, a classroom position. At the high school, around ninety-five employees, seven current vacancies, thirty-eight instructors. And those seven vacancies are being covered by elevates. So again, someone is covering those particular classrooms. At AIS, the number of employees is eight, current vacancies one, and instructors two. What was our staff and transportation currently? We have thirty-eight drivers, and we have ten drivers that are currently in training. So probably by the end of this week, we will have a total of forty-eight bus drivers for monitors. We currently have thirty-nine monitors and nine monitors that are currently, this is currency, but no currently, in training. And so we should have a total of forty-eight monitors. And we are currently seeking a bilingual staff member so that we have posted that position, and transportation will be hired for that position. So that when we get any bilingual transportation calls, we won't have to call to other buildings to help translate, we'll have someone on staff in transportation. Let me briefly talk about recruitment. We have started quite a few from their own programs. We already had a relationship with Governor State University and also Olivet. And we are currently in partnership with Grand Canyon University. On last week, we met with teachers, instructors, and air professionals, and there were two sessions that were really well-attended about air professionals who would like to go get their teaching license. So, and also teachers and instructors who may want to get their master's degrees. So we had quite a few people there at the open session for Grand Canyon. And so we will also continue to build higher retention, support the pathway into teaching through ongoing professional development. What we've done is we have our whole professional development schedule for the year for teachers. There are days where there is district-owned professional development, and then we have days that we do building on professional development so that we can meet the needs of our staff. And we also have post-potential, we have a post-potential decision in December for the next few years so that we can fill our vacancies as much as we possibly can. And that's my part.
Any questions for the board?
Um, I'm excited about the partnership with Grand Canyon. We have a teacher recruitment grant, I think that's the exact title. And one of the things that we put into the grant is support for our instructors to move to becoming licensed. And I wanted to make sure that everyone understands that it's not necessarily sustainable, and so we're not putting it into anything that we can't sustain over time. But as long as we have it, we want to encourage our instructors to go ahead and get licensed. I think we talked about it earlier today, we calculated about three thousand dollars per course. Twenty-seven hundred per course. We don't anticipate, because of our partnership with Grand Canyon, that those courses will cost that much. First of all, because it gives a twenty-five percent discount. And then also because it's a flexible online, it's an asynchronous program, meaning that everyone does not have to take the course at the exact same time. And so that would be very good for a parent that is also an instructor that has to carve out time to make sure that they're getting the work done.
Good evening, thank you, that's helpful information, appreciate the report on vacancies. It'll be a long, it's booster, you've been pacing in the back, it's your duty.
So tonight, we're going to honor our retirees. I want to go ahead and welcome up some of our student government members, they're going to help me out with this next part. So when you get up here, if you could say your name, what grade you're in, and then tell Dr. Walters what you think she should do whenever she retires.
My name is Brogan. I am in third grade. Dr. Walters should adopt a puppy and buy a new house.
I don't know about the puppy part.
My name is Angel. My name is Angel, and I'm in first grade. And I think she should go on vacation and buy a puppy.
My name is Timothy, and I am in second grade. And Dr. Walters should get my, uh, get a puppy and take it out of church.
My name is Aaliyah, and I think she should go to Texas or go to California. Or she should go to Disneyland, or she could go to Starbucks, she could get a dog or a cat, or she could go skiing.
My name is Jose. With Dr. Walters, she went on vacation to New York and bought a puppy.
Unfortunately, our kindergarten student government representative couldn't be here. Her name is Peter Popey, she's in kindergarten. And I think you should adopt a puppy from a pet store. And she's thinking for about the time, we need to bring everyone a dream, like coffee and milkshake.
Thank you, student government. Parents, if you can take them home and put them to bed, they do have school tomorrow. So our next retiree is Miss Tate, if she could please stand. So I'm going to read a letter from Mrs. Gatakoplis. "Miss Tate is an exceptional parent. She is great with all students regardless of their ability level. She is firm, consistent, yet loving and encouraging. She supports the teacher in fostering independence with her special needs population. She admits tasks in the classroom without having to be asked. She works well with her colleagues and provides positive energy to the classroom. Thank you, Miss Tate, for everything you've done for us." All right, our next retiree is Miss Jennifer Cravitt, if she could stand.
So this is a letter from Paulette Jarvis. "I've been friends with Jen Cravitt for over thirty years and have worked with her for over twenty years. And I can say with certainty that she is a good and kind-hearted person. Jen treats her peers and friends with respect and kindness and is always willing to listen and help. She has a passion for her work that shows in her quality therapy, and she truly loves her students. She will be very missed by me, all her peers, and the students in the district after retirement. I've collected some comments from just a few friends and peers. Early Gatakoplis says, Jen is the type of person who instantly collects with kids. Her demeanor and fun personality make working with her absolutely... Kelly Griffin Dolan says, Jen is always so calm and kind and helpful, and after speaking with her, somehow her day is always opened by her. Jen Yackes says, Jen truly cares for her students and wants them to succeed. She has made a difference in the lives of so many students, she will definitely be missed. Joe Cox says, the thing for last school year was keep the main thing the main thing, and she truly embodies that, she's kids first. Francis Noble says, when I think of Mrs. Cravitt, the word team, layer, farm, and supportive come to mind. And Kelly Brabro said, no, you better read the rocks."
All right, last but not least, we want to talk about our award-winning theme this year and honor one of our retirees. Thank you, Mr. Cox, for your service and everything you've done for us and all our retirees. We got even more practical points. Any questions to the board?
I do. What's your student government like? What do you think?
So each class has a student government representative and an alternate, Mrs. Khan. You don't enter time with that. So they meet once a week and we talk about building issues, um, some things that come up, you know, like finding the bathrooms, noise levels in the hallway, stuff like that. And then they're, uh, they go back and give reports to their class. So there's a representative for each class and then an alternate if they're absent, who changes every quarter.
Oh, that's great. Awesome. Thank you. One of all the really great ideas.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Cravitt. You don't have to pace it. Okay, we move on to public comments. Uh, just thanks. And I'm going to just say to you, I'm not gonna read the whole thing because I've read many times, been read many times for you. But you have, uh, five minutes. We take everything under advisement. You're speaking to the board. We're not gonna respond tonight to anything. But we will get back to you if there's something that we can get back to you on.
Sounds great. Uh, just wanted to, uh, it's about where the nation, uh, let you know that I had the opportunity to do what they call a sharing and shedding, uh, with, uh, some high school students. Uh, and one of the issues were, oh, uh, or continues to be the dress code. I gave them, uh, a little bit of history about the dress code. I told them that it was actually your parents or perhaps your grandparents that asked this about ten years ago. After looking at the dress style of many of, uh, the students. And so, as a result, uh, the Board of Education incorporated that after, uh, a little survey of the parents. And, uh, it was brought into fruition. However, uh, I do understand in the sharing and shedding, some of their concerns. And what I asked them to do, and what I'm going to ask, uh, you all to consider is this. I told them that you all have a student council. Student council is your student government. So what I asked them to do, I said, who is your student council? No one seemed to know. I told them, apparently you had to elect them because they are your student council. I don't know if that's true or not, but I do know they have a student council. So they do have a student government. I do know that they, uh, purportedly have selected them, uh, to, to go through the governmental process. Because I think it's a great learning opportunity. Now, they somehow found out through their parents that I was a county board member and that I represented. They, some of them lived in my district. Ask me to, uh, consider is to amend it in that they are wearing gray. And so, I think gray should be a color. One is, is because it's a business color. They used to wear gray suits, uh, lawyers, business individuals, uh, they wore gray shoes, gray suits, uh, blue shoes, brown. Uh, so I think gray should be an acceptable color because it is part of the norm. Uh, so in that situation, I think that's one thing that can be considered. And then the other is, um, while I do appreciate the K logo and the whole night yawns. If they're wearing a K top and they have one of Adidas or Nike, but they have the colors on. I think we need to consider that if they're there, let's not disrupt the educational process to the point that, uh, if they are in compliance with the colors and the only thing is just their name, that we reconsider that. But I do, and I will, and nobody's changed a uniform policy. Because then that means they will come any kind of way. And that's just my comments because I promised them that as a politician, since you found out, and I was on Snapchat, uh, somebody put me there, that I would come and be, in man of my word and speaking there. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. If you want campaign promise, you can check on it. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Initially, is there a, be the motion to approve the consent agenda?
To move.
Mr. Gavin, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Williams. Are there any items on the consent agenda that anybody is asking to be moved from the consent agenda? Hearing none. Are there any questions regarding any of the issues on the consent agenda? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Veronis?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Archie?
Yes.
Boland?
Yes. Motion carrying six I's, zero no's. Takes us to the action items. The first is the approval of the budget that just presented in the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve the budget?
To move.
Moved by Gavin. Mr. Gavin, second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Veronis. Any further discussion or questions regarding the budget? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Gavin?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Archie?
Yes.
Veronis?
Yes.
Boland?
Yes. Motion carries six I's, zero no's. Next is an approval of the furniture purchase for the Kankakee County. It says county. I think that's Kankakee Community Independent Living and Development Center. Is there a motion to approve this item?
To move.
Moved by Gavin, second?
Second.
Second by Veronis. Ms. Veronis, sorry. Is there any questions or discussions regarding this item? I have one and this is after the fact. There's a very large common area with lots of space. More than otherwise would seem needed for twenty to twenty-one students.
So the independent living and development center won't just have, those students are going to own the space. But we're hoping, not the late. I'm saying hoping because I won't be here. So the students are going to partner with Shapiro. Um, I already talked to the Kankakee Valley and Rec Center. And they're gonna partner with other adults, and these are adults learning to be adults. They're going to partner with other adults in the community, including DBCHS Transition Program. Um, and other countywide transition programs to have things like adult proms. And so, the goal is that they would actually use that space so that in a transition program, usually the students go out to the community. But we want it to be reciprocal. We want the community to also come to them. And so, that space will be used as shared space. We're even okay if, um, our specific partners use that space for meeting. But it'd have to be very specific partners. Um, so like, I mean, like the city of Kankakee wanted to do something, they want to have a meeting there. We would actually rent it out and our students would be in charge of kind of managing that rental. And so, that's the goal. That's why we have such a large common area.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, call the roll.
Brett?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Archie?
Yes.
Veronis?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Boland?
Yes. Motion carries six I's, zero no's. Next is the approval for the purchase, uh, we're lending, our furniture for the, uh, is there a motion to approve?
To move.
Moved by Gavin, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Williams. Is there any, are there any, is there any discussion or questions regarding this, this item? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Brett?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Archie?
Yes.
Veronis?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Boland?
Yes. Motion carries six I's, zero no's. I think we consolidate four, five, and six. I think they're all the same essential motion unless somebody objects. Is there an injection consolidating four, five, and six? All right, in that event, is there a motion to approve items four, five, and six?
To move.
Motion by Gavin, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Williams. Any questions about these three items? This is essentially an effort to recover transportation expenses for students who are, live less than a mile and a half from the school. Correct. Hearing no questions, roll call, please.
Williams?
Yes.
Archie?
Yes.
Veronis?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Boland?
Yes. Motion carries six I's, zero A's. Next is old business superintendent search update. Uh, there is over on the table over here, and I should have said this before everybody left. There is the list of leadership qualities that were the result of the surveys and the, uh, focus groups that were conducted. Uh, interesting results for the focus groups and consistent with what you just talked about this evening. One of the highest priorities was assuring that our children and students are ready for the next level of education. Uh, from all the groups that met. Uh, a number of items came to the top. But overall, again, thank you to all of those of you who participated. It was extremely helpful. And if you look at the qualities, um, if we find the person with all those qualities, people have done a masterful job. I'm not sure that that's gonna be possible, but it's good to have goals. The search team is in the process of interviewing candidates at this point in time. And we hope to have their results, uh, sometime in October. Uh, so it's moving along and we're making that way. Next item on the agenda in the old business is community center construction additional long jump pit. Uh, is there any discussion on that matter? It's an informational discussion item, so are there any, are there any issues to? My understanding of that is, I'll defer to the superintendent just a minute. As the request is, the discussion was whether or not we needed a second long jump pit located inside the community center. The pro of that is that in a community center, well, rather for the purposes of the track and field, uh, you're using that purpose. The downside is the cost, we don't have a change order at this point. The cost is estimated to be, uh, around a hundred thousand dollars is what I believe I was told. Further, it's like delaying the completion of the community center by at least thirty days and maybe longer than that.
Um, I was, I was told one week, but that was by the architects coming from the, um, contractors. And we don't believe that the contractors are people. We don't know that that, that's accurate.
And the servants are already behind.
Yes, that's correct.
This would just hit you in the spine. But I, is there any discussion? This is the time of the heaven. So whether or not we've gone, make any other moves. Right now, it is that we are not approving any change in the community center through our hired, hired hands. I believe that's correct.
Yeah, that's correct.
Chris?
Yep. How about you, Mr. Gavin?
I'll be the one who speaks. I am, or have been a watchdog over the, the district from the time that we started the, uh, the construction sometime, some years ago. Uh, when it comes to the field house, uh, field house or the community center in track and field, I am a track and field guy. I can run, I can manage, uh, a track meet, track and field, run track and field in my sleep. I am the president of USA Track and Field, uh, not president, but the vice president of USA Track and Field of Illinois. And I have been for the last ten or twelve years. Uh, we, they do, our architects do have a plan for, for, uh, the long jump area. And what's needed is actually two pits. Uh, I'll tell you the story that happened to us this past spring. We held a invitation where we had thirty-four teams, thirty-four teams. And, uh, each team gets two jumpers and, uh, and thirty-four times, thirty-four times is two, which is girls and boys. And, and the number of times that they have to jump, uh, is, uh, it, it took, it took a long time to do. We started the track meet at nine-thirty in the morning with field events. And of course, the long jump was doing that period. Uh, the track, the track meet started at eleven-thirty with the running events. And, uh, and the meet was done by probably about, the running events were done about three-twenty. And we were still doing the, the triple jump. And, and, and so, it's always, it, it, two pits, two pits are needed. Uh, the architect, well, you can't do, I mean, you know, we can't, we can't operate two pits. But I think we, there was a drawing, they put together a drawing to where we worked it out to where we can run through the tracks. Uh, if, if most meets, uh, start, uh, two hours early, which they do for field events. Uh, the, the cost of, uh, of the pits, it, it is what it is. I mean, you know, if, if they said ninety thousand dollars to do it, it, it is ninety thousand dollars to do. And it is a necessary evil. Uh, and, and I say to people, would you build that house, would you build a five-bedroom house with one bathroom? So essentially, building the, uh, track and field, uh, field house with one pit is like building a house and, and only having one bathroom. Because it is, it's, it's needed. I, I don't know what I can say to you about the cost of it. The cost of it is what the cost is. If you were buying a, 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 a new vehicle and they told you the cost was fifty or sixty thousand dollars, that's the cost of, of what it is. The, the community center field house, it will be here thirty to forty years from now. And, uh, at, at thirty years, at ninety thousand dollars is three thousand dollars a year. So, I mean, uh, we can't look at what the cost is, but what the, the, uh, what the, you know, what the long jump area will do or what it is. But it's, it's something that is, it's needed to complete the Cadillac of a building that we're building. And, uh, and, and I, I can't put it in a disclaimer than, uh, my opinion, my expertise in running the track and field meets. It's, it's such a beautiful thing that we're having and we can't store it ourselves by saying we're not doing it because, uh, of the, of the cost. We, we, we touch the things and, 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 and it's just something that's needed. Okay?
The searching.
It's ninety thousand dollars. Um, and we have funds. I don't have a problem with that. But right now, we're doing students with disabilities transitioning to adulthood. We need to finish that up first. We need to put that money for the students. Um, I know what you, I know exactly what you're talking about, Mr. Gavin. We have, you and I have discussed this. But I'm thinking about our children that's trying to reach adulthood, come out of their home. We need to put that money there first. Now, when I, one of the things I, we have money from DLA that we can work with. So I asked you, let's, um, ask them, we've, we've been really generous to them. They rebuilt this school, two schools. What, where's that money? Can they take money out of there and add that long jump? Or can they just do it on their own? They can afford it. Everybody asked. If they have time, could you ask? I think they should put it in their own amount of money, the two contractors. So I think we should talk about it a little more because I'm for the children first. I know it's important. You talked to me about it and I agree. I see what you're saying. But I still think students with disabilities transitioning to adulthood need their building finished first. And there's money left over, I don't care, take a vacation. But I think they should, uh, be taken care of first. Yes? Thank you.
Do you finish? I'm sorry, I need another question. Do you know?
Hmm.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, I have a question. I have to go with this in appearance, any other project?
Yes.
Is it what?
That project?
Would it, would it interfere? I mean, so we're already going to the final round. We predicted that. so we're already going to the fund balance, we predicted that, we were thinking that we'd go into the fund balance. We're also, we're, we have a lot of projects going on at the same time, we do. It's, it's a little overwhelming.
Cause I, if, if we were going to do it, now would be the time to do it before they get down to the foundation.
Yeah. Um, I'm in, see you.
Well, it, the decision has to be made, made basically today, because otherwise you're delaying the entire project.
Yeah, that's my maximum question. I mean, um, did it want to interfere with the transition center of the most student like that?
So, at, so normally when we do construction projects, we actually do them very systematically. In the last year or two, we have six or seven projects going on at the same time. And so I can't guarantee that it wouldn't interfere because they would have to draw up a plan then. I don't know what happens on that end, but I do, I do know that we have a number of projects going on at the same time. And in my past ten years, we've never had that before. We've always had one or two things going on at a time.
Why you say that we got today? The day is gone since.
Oh, I told them at the end of the day, I would let them know. I did tell them last week, no. And so if the, if the notice changed and I need to tell them, like, I need to text them as soon as we're done.
I, I, you know, Justin spoke to you today, validate your opinion, and we talked about that, but I think I'm marrying and, and drop. You know, if, if it needs to be in, you know, we need to do it, but again, we need to make sure that we have the funds and our other projects get done. So is there a way that maybe we can get a little bit more time as to the list of projects that are done and that we're, we're working on? Cause I know there's a few, I know there's some playground, and then you would mention.
I can, I can tell you all of them right now. We have the, um, Independent Living and Development Center. We have the mechanicals at regular. Um, I'm, I'm not sure if we ever completely could, um, reach for the outdoor classroom at regular. So we have the outdoor classroom at regular, we have the playground at playground, and playground as soon as we're done with all of the bid specs for some playground, as soon as we're done with all of the bid specs for the Independent Learning and Development Center. So those bid specs are being developed right now.
So we got one?
What?
So board, um, good evening again. Dr. Walters will confirm and ask, well, Mr. Gavin, uh, attended just about every facility or painting or school well that the architects conduct, um, every Wednesday. And one of the things that we recently learned is there's always a set aside for those things unknown that, um, architects suggest is normally roughly ten percent of the project of any given scope work. And as they communicate to us that the set aside has been eaten up by changelings. So Mrs. Archie asked, begs the question, is there money available? Every dollar you spend now, you're pledging additional reserves. So I want to make sure that the board is completely clear and everything's all. So I'm not, Doc, who am I to say whether this is important? And by the way, Mr. Godbuck, as you gave, I ran track too. So I know the, the importance of having appropriate facilities, but in the next breath, I also recognize that the board is going to hold administration responsible for tightening our bill and leaving the school district in a beneficial position. So I would ask you a question.
Yes, it's a final question, but it's all the best of that.
You did one of them.
Uh, I understand, don't get me wrong, I know that it, it needs to be done, I was talking to, but when I, I'm in this situation, um, and like you said, uh, thirty, forty years that it'd be there. We don't have the money, but no one is, they, they spent all the extra money they had. Um, did they tell you how they did it, what happened, that they spent the money?
Yes, and the reason why they, all, all architects, uh, give is set aside is because when they're developing plans, they don't know what they're going to run into, um, after, I mean, uh, excavating and things of that nature. There were pipes that, Mr. Gavin, could probably speak to it a lot more specifically than I can. Uh, pipes that, that were ran into, uh, that the architects did forecast that happened in the high school. I also think it happened at the junior high school as well. Um, so they put that set aside so that there are monies available for the what if, what if we run into something and those dollars have been depleted as well.
And the architects did say that they were going to give us a list of all of the, um, things that were covered under those, under the change orders. I have not had a chance to look, see if I already received it. I want to pick up my phone and look, but I want people to know what I'm doing when I look at it. Uh, I'm, I don't think that I've seen anything, but once I see it, I'll forward it to everyone.
Well, another question I would like to ask, uh, when they was doing this and putting money aside, when did they put that long jump in there in the first place, mom? And adding up there for the payment, we paid them twenty-six thousand million. And they're going to add it off there. Are you architects, they know what was needed, just people's help to, they know they need that much?
Uh, architects, architects will, can draw up, can draw up anything. Um, have, have they ever ran a track meet or, or probably, probably not. And, you know, and, and I'm not taking anything from them, you know, they, they said they brought up, uh, the expertise of myself and others like me who have been around track and field, who have been in track meets and, or who have ran track meets. I mean, our ideas of what we think should be in there. And, and if we had the space, if we had the space, yeah, I, I don't think it would have been a problem. And then the downsides in a losing four, five million dollars, uh, uh, made it somewhat difficult to, to, to design and put in what we actually needed. And, uh, coming back to them saying, well, we'll run, we'll run off the track to a pit, to a long jump pit. Can we add this? Can we do that? I mean, and, and, and that's, and that's where we work. You asked the question about the set aside, and we did say, well, where did I five hundred thousand dollars go? And if it went into the, the pipe that they want to cross, I mean, uh, well, maybe that's a hundred fifty thousand dollars of our money that maybe should not have gone to, to, uh, to, 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 out of, out of the, uh, uh, a hundred fifty, I mean, the five hundred thousand dollars. So they're going to give us those answers or whatever, well, where it actually went to.
When you, like, like you talked about building a house, you said.
I'm sorry.
You talked about, then like you said, the architects, and they didn't know what, uh, constitution, uh, a field house like that, they should ask somebody. And then they end away with it. They're professionals. They build a, they build house. They should know what goals in the field house. They know the community, what happened. So you don't know, um, to, um, they should ask somebody. They should came to the table and said, this is what you, then you were there all the time.
We, it's, and you know, and what happened, uh, from the time, uh, when they read through it back, uh, I missed the meeting or, or whatever, and I never knew that it was pulled off the table and.
Oh, it was in?
It was, yes, it was pulled off. They moved, I put it reserve, and it was pulled off the table. And I didn't know, and when I asked the question to them two weeks ago, uh, when you guys going to start the other long jump pit? And they said, didn't you know that was taken off the table was what they said to me? And guess what? I never knew.
Okay.
And then, and, and I'm, and I'm not arguing, it was, would have been a mistake.
Ma'am, please.
Hold on, just let, let his breath speak.
So, um, I know we're going to have this discussion, so I really wanted to listen, so that's why I waited, because I wanted to hear, um, something, some things, key things I was looking for. And so, Mr. Gavin, one of the things you said is that we needed a, um, another long jump pit. But the reason that you gave that we needed a long jump pit doesn't really suffice us spending another hundred thousand dollars. If you told me that we need another long jump after what we have, we're getting ready to go to track meets, we're going to probably get a losing end because we don't have X, Y, and Z, then I would probably say yes. But the only explanation you gave was just the timing, that it's going to take a little more time. So I kind of don't understand why we need to spend another hundred thousand dollars just for the sake of time. The second thing is that you made a reference to building a house and with one bathroom. And one of, one thing, one of the things I, I love is to watch home shows. So one of the things they always tell you is that you can't always get what you want. It's, we just talked about that, didn't we? But you can't always get what you want. Sometimes you get one bathroom, sometimes you have to decide what's the most important to you, because this is your budget. And so when you have your budget, you might want five bathrooms, which you can only afford to get through. And do you really need five bathrooms? Probably not. Would it be nice to have five bathrooms? Probably not for me, because I don't want to clean them, but I'm just saying. So I think we need to be, we just, we just heard our expense before, we just talked about that, it's not a budget. Um, he just, I'm sorry, Mr. Derek just gave us another, um, explanation of why we need to kind of be cautious about our spending. And I think that it would be a bit irresponsible at this time to put more money into the, into any project unless it's for issues that have come up. And so, um, we do have a lot of things on the table. I'm appreciative that we've decided to do all these projects because a lot of them are needed, but I think it would be a bit irresponsible as a board right now to throw out some of our money for something we really don't need. To me, it sounds more like a want than a need. And so, um, I just kind of want to be responsible. I know we're only going to get back to twenty-twenty-five, we want to get our, our budget back where it needs to be because we got so much going on. And then we still have other projects that we haven't touched. And so I think it's just irresponsible, and I think it's a bit insensitive to other schools who are waiting for their turn in lines, get their things, and we're going to add more money to something that we really don't need.
Did they decide to come track, uh, saying that that was in there and done?
No.
Well, my, my move from thirty minute to twenty-six minute, they got that.
Well, it, 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 it was, it was digging away and, you know, and, and when I say, you know, I don't, you know, the worst to say that, uh, you need to, you do, you need to, uh, I can't help it, it's not irresponsible or anything. You need to, to make it work. The analogy of building a house with, with only one bathroom, I mean, uh, uh, respect my, respect me for knowing track and field, yet we do need to, and, and to, to be, uh, a competitive, uh, field house, uh, we need, we need to, and, 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 and I don't want to put it any other way than that. I, you know, we, we, we need to of them.
I get it. When we talk, uh, we're doing this because we have a lot of invitations there, but I guess.
It, it, you, you are building a, you are building a class, a class indoor field house. Uh, uh, Mr. Jones, the, the track man, that's good, you're building the class and, and, and to say you only got to put, uh, one long jump pit in there, I would.
I would look back, I would, I would. I would give you more, uh, an invitation to, to justify a pit.
Yes, what?
Cause I know people are attracted to it, so, but, um, I would be there. The invitation stuff, we're here, I know we're here, we're thirteen, fourteen, I mean, how, I would be going to be be having that, be, that's an issue.
Well, uh, not only the, not only have we done outdoors, we, uh, we met, uh, we did both sectionals and, uh, in one year, the girls, the boys, we done three sectionals, we done the girls, boys, and junior high. And, uh, will we, will we be competitive enough to do indoor? Yes, we will be. And, and, and the only way to do it is, is that they have to do, uh, competitive pits to dump it.
Okay. What I'm hearing from the majority of the board is that you, the next step would typically be to say to the architect, give us a change order. To give us a change, we need to know how much it's going to cost, and we need to approve, somebody needs to approve a change order. Um, I haven't said anything, everybody knows what my position was in the community center. I've been part of the team since the community, since I made my statements about the community center, I've done a lot. I also know that one of the lists that our construction priority was LCC auditorium. I know that that's now urgent because they're not going to make incandescent bulbs that fit our theater, or our, our auditorium. So we have to now change, just change out the technical sound system, we have to change out the lighting, otherwise we can't use that auditorium. Hundred thousand dollars to me is a lot of money. And, you know, and it's not much compared to twenty-six point five million, I get it, but we've also added scoreboards, we've added other changes, and I think that that's a lot of money. And I sympathize and I respect Mr. Gavin, your experience and your knowledge, but I wish that they had consulted your experience and knowledge before they put us in this position. Because quite frankly, I, as one board member, and that's all I am, would not support this. I would rather spend it. I could give you a long list of things that I could spend a hundred thousand dollars on in this district. Some of them are wants, but there's a whole lot of needs, it could eat up a hundred thousand dollars also. So unless I'm wrong, and each of you can tell me, I'm not in favor of, and we can't vote on it anyway, but I'm not in favor of changing the direction that our superintendent has given the architect. So I really just need a yes or no, or do you want to pursue this beyond this discussion? And I'm asking each of you to say yes, pursue it beyond the discussion, this discussion, or no. Not a vote, it's not an official vote, it's not a motion, it's just a, a poll, for lack of a better term. So I will ask Mr., I, whoever wants to go first. My vote is no. Anybody else want to be, seek the position? If we, yes tonight, then we are telling Dr.
My, my vote, my vote is yes.
So this way? No? Okay. I think the answer on the poll is, and this can come up on the agenda later, it has to, but I think the answer on the poll is you don't have, and we need a motion to adjourn. Okay, sure.
I've been asked in the community a time, few times about field houses. We only have one head sub tonight. A question came up, and they keep questioning about who should have been named after them. And I just want to give the public that's listening and the school, whoever, whatever. I had said that I would like for a doctor to be named after Dr. Walters. And you want to know why? Well, I'm glad you asked. I'm going to tell you, that's what I feel. When she came here, if you don't know, ask somebody what the school district was, what the shape was yet. And since she's been here, while she's on the community board at St. Mary's Hospital, uh, she participated in the awareness. She's currently the executive director of Youth Empowerment Program that includes thirty-seven different programs. Uh, she also, um, she brought competency-based education that, um, flexible learning and diverse opportunities to our students. Uh, the K K counting, uh, K K college and career readiness. The goal is to help students understand how academics lead to long-term career goals destruction. Also, as follows, too much, we need to say tonight, I know you want to go home, I know I do. The Youth Empowerment Program has additional support for over eight hundred students in grade six through twelve. Students participate in activities that are meaningful, adult, that leads to increasing social skill and self-awareness. That is something that we need to know in the St. Mary's case. The things that she has done, and you can follow her, the other people that have been, that has been named after them and buildings instruction. The new teacher project, the TNTP, to evaluate the amount of instruction provided across the district at grade level. Uh, since she's been here, over ninety percent of the high school and the junior high, the cafeteria and library added air conditioning to newly renovated spaces and two million grade school building. She's been very busy, building a community center that would include learning. cafeteria and library, added air conditioning, newly renovated spaces and two million grade school building. She's been very busy. Building a community center that would include learning spaces and also JROTC, daycare, all these things are gonna be in there, we're talking about that other, a long jump, it's gonna be in there. These are the things that she has done. She also has, uh, honors, awards, Edna, the leadership award, uh, citizen of the year, outstanding woman of the year, with a weapon, uh, program with Jan on, on the board there. All these things that she has done since she's been here, she deserves it, she's, uh, achieved it. Now listen, I, I asked a few people, what constitutes a person, uh, building or anything being named after them? So far, uh, it shouldn't be because of your family name, a sedentary, uh, reason. I'm a Jackson, there's a lot of things, but I'm a land's name, but obviously maybe building Kekke, maybe somewhere else. Uh, look at the, uh, other buildings and structure around, not only the school, but in Kekke, and that's just, how did they get named after that person? And why, what did that person do to? Now this building is coming up without the long jump, looks like the second one, we don't know yet. I believe in the power of prayer, so I will pray that our DLA come up with this, uh, something just that will put that there, cause I hear you, I hear you. And indeed, we're looking at the other things and when I'm on the board for children, I want them to have everything they need, not what they want, but what they need, these things are what they need. So that's my take on it. Tonight, thank you for listening and you have some of the things that I had said that she has for the first hour. She's leaving, she needs more than the little bookie of mine, which is nice, but, I mean, it's insane. Thank you.
Thank you. A motion to adjourn? Moved by Mr. Williams, second. Second by Mr. Ronan, all in favor, say aye. Post, time, motion carried. Uh, you are adjourned.